For the January twenty fourth, twenty fifth, City of Ventnor Commission meeting. Prior to. Yes, Durazio. Prior to starting our meeting, we have a new live streaming public comment disclaimer. To read. Everybody here. City of Ventnor offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access. Public who participate remotely will be muted during the commission meeting, except during the public comments portion of the meeting. Any person attempting to disrupt the meeting may be denied access at the discretion of the city. In the event remote access is unavailable due to a technological, to a technology malfunction. Or other reason beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. City commission meetings are held in person and the public is welcome to attend. The best way to ensure an individual's ability to publicly comment is to attend in person. So the comments may be made in the event of a technology malfunction. The city reserves the right to discontinue offering public comment via remote access at its discretion for any future meeting. But this is something that a lot of municipalities are. Having to do out of necessity, really. So. That's our remote. Comment, a remote public disclaimer, and if you can raise to salute the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. Lisa, can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Kribel.
Here.
Commissioner Mento.
Here.
Mayor Langraff.
Here.
Mayor Langraff, joining us from Florida, we're all. Thoughts are with you during this time.
Thanks, appreciate it.
So. First next to pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, act up and notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted on in City Hall and on the Atlantic and on the city's website. www dot vendor city. Dot org. So this is our. This is our workshop meeting, half of the meeting. It is less formal than our second half, so we're gonna. We during this workshop meeting. It's meant just to discuss the items that are on the agenda that we are going to vote on. After we close this half and begin the next. So the next item on the agenda is presentations, which we have done. Tonight, we're going to talk about some items that have some. Further discussion when we bring them up in this meeting. We have department, the next item is department head reports. Can you, can you hear me? Sorry, I'm a little, the, the microphone is a little tight here. Hang on a second. There you go. How's that, Marsha? Great, good to see you. Next is the department head, department, department head reports, we have none. Next is capital discussion, which this evening we have, we do not have. Items. Eight is minutes from December twenty first, twenty twenty three regular meeting. I believe, Lisa, we have everyone here, so we can.
Correct, Commissioner Mento was absent that meeting, so we'll just need you and Mayor Langraff.
To, okay.
Yes.
First item that will be on the agenda for the regular meeting is introduction of ordinance two zero two four dash zero zero three. Ordinance of the City of Ventnor, amending and supplementing chapter twenty two one four vehicles and traffic. Articles scheduled chapter forty, schedule. Seven loading zones. So this is something that cleans up. Loading zones throughout the city. It's an ordinance introduction that we have discussed in the past. Cleaning up some language.
Tim, just a question on that, is this the, the street ends, boardwalk, street ends?
No.
Okay, do we have, do we have that on tonight?
We expect to have that at the next meeting. We did discuss that today. And we are making a broad based ordinance with general language and specifying some of the. Some of the, of the street areas that don't quite line up with those. Off the street end distance requirements. So we have a draft started today, actually.
All right, thank you.
Next is public hearing, will be public hearing and adoption of the ordinance. Budget ordinance, this is the. An ordinance we do every year. It is not to exceed the municipal budget. We discussed it at the last meeting. And so this is the adoption of that. Any questions on that? And.
That's, that's the cap bank, yep.
Cap bank, right. And then next is ordinance two zero, two zero two four dash zero zero two, public hearing and adoption on that. This is the amending vehicle traffic, this is something we do every year. Corrective language again for parking meter zones. For that ordinance. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Just that last year. So the next is a group of resolutions that we will adopt by consent. So the first is zero four three, tax abatement. For one oh eight South Oxford Avenue, there's a series of these tax abatements. This is something we do regularly. So that includes zero four three for one oh eight South Oxford. Zero four four for one fifteen South Princeton Avenue. Zero four five is another tax abatement for sixty seven hundred Atlantic Avenue. And that's the tax abatements for this particular meeting. Next item will be. Zero four six, which is refund of a deposit for the community center for the Ventnor Democratic Club. And zero four seven is a refund for the deposit of the community center for Dennis Kelly, who is the Republican club. So those, those deposits are typically used for that, they can use that facility. The next item is. Accepting the retirement of Jimmy Agostino affected April first. Mayor, do you want to make comment on that here?
I do, thanks, Tim. So Jimmy has been with the city for thirty four years, just shy of thirty four years, thirty three and change. He started in nineteen ninety. And he's going to retire on April first of this, this year. Serves as our city's construction official, our building subcode official, and also serves as our zoning official since nineteen ninety five. And he's also the head of our Department of Code Enforcement and Building Office. So. He holds numerous licenses. He is an extremely valuable. Member of our team here in Vender and has been for a long time. He holds the licenses for construction official, building subcode, building inspector, housing code, inspector of hotel and multiple dwellings. You know, he also assists with the city of the borough of Longport. As a shared service with the City of Ventnor and Longport with their code inspections and things of that nature. So. He will be certainly sorely missed. Jimmy has done a fantastic job for our administration and prior. He's been a key person when, when we came in, Tim and Maria, you were, you were on the team then as well. You know, that's the first person that I sat down with and say, look, how do we get better at making this department more? Development friendly and, and he gave me the ideas and we moved through them. Or he effectuated the ideas I had in some cases. Sometimes with some kicking and screaming, which is rightly so. That's a good exchange of ideas when, when someone doesn't always agree with you, but works with you to get something done. And that's something that I think we've all shown in each of our departments, but Jimmy's going to be missed. We will be stepping up Dino Cavallari into that position and some of that position, not all of it. He doesn't do the zoning aspect of things, but. Jimmy, I don't know if you're on or in the room, but you will be certainly missed in our community. You've been a godsend to, to us and moving into our administration. So I thank him for his years of service.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. And I would just add that that department had to respond to the scale of inflow of work over. You know, during, as COVID sort of created a boom and some of the other things that happened here in Ventnor. So he scaled that, that department and took on a lot more volume, just in general, so.
Oh, yeah, stepped it up and then, and you know, we've got good people in there handling it and Jimmy chose a lot of those people, so it's good.
Yep.
Good office.
Great. So then, so we, that will be voted on during the. Regular meeting. Next is resolution zero four nine. Which is appointing our Pope to our, to coordinate random alcohol and drug testing, not to exceed sixty five hundred dollars. We've had discussion with them about their, their services. We're happy to have them back. Any questions there?
No.
Next item zero five zero is. Authorizing, authorizing a local recreation improvement grant. The ability for us to apply for a grant, this grant applies to. Community things it can be used for. So this is just the application process, but as we know, Jim Rotella can, can write successful applications. In our newsletter, just recently, going back to sixteen, we were just, just over thirteen million in grants that he and the city have. Won for direct purposes. In this case. If successful, it could be used towards community centers, playgrounds, walking trails, bike trails, multi sport courts. And improvements or professional services for those things. So. I think that, I think we'll all be in favor of that. Next item is. Resolution zero five one. Which is a basic refund for tax overpayment. And then the next two resolutions kind of go together, zero five two, this is Lance, this is more your area, if you want.
Sure, thanks, Tim. So these are part of the construction, utility construction that's going on on Lafayette Avenue as well as Monmouth. And now we'll morph into Harvard Avenue from Monmouth going back towards Winchester. As they're doing the construction, as a lot of these utility projects do, they run into issues. That's what these are designed to handle. The first is part of a hiring the engineer to read, to design and a sewer replacement going up Harvard Avenue. That they ran into that they could not repair. The old clay pipes are just disintegrating as you're, as you're trying to fix them. So. We're going to repair that block and repave that street because it's, it's about to fail anyway. So. So both of those are tied to those two projects on Lafayette and Monmouth Avenue. To, to allow those to get change orders to get that work done.
Right, right. So that, that's resolution zero five two and resolution zero five three, both related to those construction changes. And new, new requirements. Great, thank you. Next is resolution two zero two four dash zero five four, resolution issuing the issuance of liquor license. To Ocean Draft LLC doing business as Suppory Woodfire Pizza and Restaurant. I believe they are in the audience tonight. So we want to welcome them to the fray of the third and final liquor license in Ventnor. Congratulations going through the process. And that'll be voted on today. Any questions on that for the bench, Lance?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Does this allow them to, because I, we've, you know, we've obviously been talking with Tony and his team. They're looking to relocate that license to Aroma. Does this allow that to happen or do we have to pass another resolution down the road for that?
This is the first step.
Okay.
Maybe Tom can add some comment.
Yeah, that would be a separate application for a place to place transfer.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So there's a form for it's place to place transfer after this is in their possession.
Okay, good.
So. That'll be voted on. The next, and next item is zero five five. This is authorizing the bidding for emergency repairs for water and sewer system. So this again is something that we do. It's your, Lance, it's your area, if you want to add some color.
Yeah, sure. So we, we, we put this out to bid for, for sewer and water repairs in emergent nature. And you'll hear some of that in my, my mayor's comments later. For stuff that our guys can't handle. If it goes below four feet in depth. Or if it's just too much of a, of a project, we have to bring in, you know, our big guns, you know, in the past, it's been Arthur Henry. So this, this is, they've been the guys that we call to come in. There are several utility companies, Sam Burns Mechanical, Arthur Henry, and we use all those guys kind of interchangeably when we need them. So. That's what this is for, to handle these bigger emergent, emergent projects.
Right. You need the right tool in the shed, depending on what the project or who hit what.
And it's typically a big tool.
Usually a big tool, that's right. So that's, that, that's on the agenda. Now we're adding three resolutions today. And one of them, the first one would be zero five six. This is authorizing the bidding for, of professionals for a conceptual eco park. I'll give a couple of comments on this. We're, we're, we're moving forward step by step. This is a long. Term project, but we received a two hundred thousand dollar grant, I believe part of it can be used for this effort. This is simply putting out to bid the ability to design what we've already had memorialized in our. Our, our master plan. Which is the use of roughly a hundred and fifty acres of unused land that has been sort of kicked to one process or another, being used for one use or another. In this case, we're gathering some momentum and some traction with a grant and, and the group. That is helping. Sort of create what our wish list is. And now it's time to bring it to a professional's attention to see what we can really do to make a presentation. To other entities, the other, other bidding, other, other funding sources. And also bring the public in, bring schools into what this area can be. For a long term project for the city. So. Excited to see this first step and hap- happy to, to, to sort of be the person that can help coordinate that for the city. It's a, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a great.
You're doing a little more than coordinating it there, Commissioner Kribel. You're leading that charge and doing a fantastic job with it. This is. This is something that, that can change that section of our community. And as, as you and I both have heard, there's interest in this on the federal level of assisting us. So it's, it's a great project.
This, this could be a gift to the whole city and the county and the state. And it's kind of something I, I agree, I haven't kind of let go of and kind of keep poking at this until it happens.
Now you're, now we're not going to let you.
So this is a big project and it could be really something that we as a city can all kind of look at and be proud of. If it become, if we, if we can get all the right tumblers in place and I, and I, I feel confident we can. Next resolution is zero five seven, this again is for you, sort of a public works area. This is an emergency repair waiver for the, for an emergency repair to the HVAC at the community building.
Yeah, that, the, it's not part of the library system, it's in the same structure, but it's a separate system. We're going to go out, we're going to look at a, a split system there, the micro systems and try and offset some of the costs a little bit. But this gets out and gets that, that fixed. We lost the heating system there this past week, so that's why this is an urgent matter.
Right, right. Okay, so that's zero five seven. The last one that we're going to add on the bench is. I guess also, you know, Lance and I have been working on this for a while. Zero five eight is resolution authorizing the second half of. The contract we have with William McLeese Architecture to proceed with the preparation of contract documents and bidding and construction administration. For a band shell under the terms of contract that we awarded in resolution six, three six zero of twenty twenty. One. So this is the now coming to fruition. We're doing this the right way. We've got the, we, while we were on board with, while we were on a meeting with Lance and I, while we were on meeting with the, with the architect. We received the permit for this from the DEP. So we are clear to go forward with this. I ask Jim to put up some images that we have of the conceptual design for everyone to see. And I also want to point out. In the audience tonight is. The members of the beautification committee. Some of them. We have Shelley Durazio, we have Marcia Gillespie's here. And also Rose Hamilton is here. So the, and, and of course. Peter, Shelley's husband, also a member of that beautification committee, always on board with every, everything they do. But so if you can see the, the, the design here, it is a simplified design, it's a. It's, and the reason I bring up the beautification committee and I'll have them speak once I give a little bit of the description of this. Is that they're always here to help support things that are happening in the city. And part of this. Part of this, part of their effort towards the city is to, is to, is to make a donation towards the completion of this. It will, it will be a low structure, considering that there are people going to be using this from the beach. It'll occupy the existing location where we have a gazebo that has somehow survived the. I maybe, I don't know how it got through Sandy, but it's still standing and. But also due to the popularity of our concerts, we have, these concerts are, are sometimes. Thousands of people coming to these concerts and it's, it's a great hometown, puts the hometown sort of at, and it's in a, in a, in a great light. So this will operate, it'll be as low maintenance as possible. It's going to be a concrete foundation. It's going to have the same IP panels that we have on other structures that we've incorporated through our administration at the, at the pier. And at the Beach Patrol Headquarters. So we're looking to have the same kind of form family of design finishes. That kind of relate, so people kind of know they're in, if they're in, you know, that these are municipal buildings. That all the same color family and there'll be a, a, there'll be a hardscaping area leading up to it that has the ability to use. Bricks for donations, in other words, to memorialize a, this is in memory park. So it sort of makes, it'll help us fund it, but it'll also kind of fits with Memorial Park that you can. You know, and the fact that we have so many benches now that are, that are not enough places for people to, to, to memorialize their loved ones. In this case, they can, they can purchase a brick and it'll be part of that whole left hand side. Leading up to the, to the. To the, to the stage area. It'll be handicap accessible, it'll have lighting and electrical points for bands. It'll also be pretty big. It's roughly twenty five by thirty now, so roughly three times the size of the existing gazebo. So it'll be a bigger space for bigger bands, maybe Elvis impersonators for, for Shelley. Shelley, do you have it? I mean, give you the, give you the mic if you'd like to say anything and.
You scaled it back because initially it was very expensive.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, you know, Lance actually, we kind of circled back to one of the original ideas that Lance brought, which is something you'd seen in, in.
Cincinnati.
That's right, in Cincinnati. And we, there is an installation similar to this at. At Canale, I believe. So we can see this in person, that band shell idea, but it's also, it's on the beach. So we did have kind of a larger structure in mind. But this seems to make sense for, for the location. It's also going to add a little buffer of planning. And I think it's going to be a great addition. You can see some perspectives of it too, Jim, could you show them during the day and at night?
Look at that.
So at night it'll be lit from below. You'll be able to see, and then you'll see that, that's kind of gives you some scale. And then there's a third image that shows it from the boardwalk. So it's a really, I tried to pick a, a canopy that was, you don't see that often. There's a couple of normal shapes that are. You know, more band shell. This is something a little unique. It's got a kind of a butterfly shape to it. But I think we're, I think we're, we've got a great, another great opportunity to have a landmark. It's going to be something that's going to be a landmark. People are going to remember it.
I think you just gave it a nickname, the butterfly band shell.
There you go. There you go. But, but if. Just if you can come up to the mic and state your name, it is official.
Shelley Durazio from the Vender Beautification Committee, along with Marcia Gillespie, Rose Hamilton. Peter Mockover, Cindy Windrob and Pete Durazio. This has been a long time coming, I guess since twenty maybe eighteen, nineteen. In conjunction with a few things, so people know the beautification committee, we do the chef's night out every year. This will be our eleventh year. We have two more to go. At thirteen, I bow out. That's my lucky number. We do the garden tour. We've done a lot of things for the city. I don't know if people are aware of the enclosures on the beach that need some. Tender love and care now. Receptacles on the boardwalk, we'll call them receptacles, not trash cans, because at five hundred and fifty dollars apiece. They're receptacles and also through the city on Ventnor Avenue and Atlantic Avenue. We filled in for some banners on the boardwalk and the last time we did the complete entire boardwalk with banners. That are now being used throughout the city. We've done American flags, banners on, on Atlantic Avenue and American flags on Ventnor Avenue. And in addition to which the welcome to Ventnor signs, we've had sponsors. But our big event that we've done is obviously the chef's night out. Along with the committee and thanking them for all their hard work and dedication. I have to thank the businesses. Without our businesses, without our restaurants, and they all know who they are. This will be eleven years. I go into them and they do not refuse me and they provide for sometimes three hundred and fifty people. Their chefs, their cooks, their servers. They're there for us, the ice cream pilers with all, with all their delicacies. The bakeries with their sweet treats and of course our delicious candies. And then our liquor stores with samples of red and white wine. Our musicians that play for us every year donate their time, four hours they play. Our host and hostesses stand there for four hours checking wristbands, checking tickets, guiding people. And then, of course, we try to give back, we give the vendors a free space in front of all our establishments to sell. And to help enhance our, our event. So it's a big thank you for everyone in the community that's come together to make this come to fruition. So from all that we've done in the past years and now for this, we are giving the city, at the time of the ribbon cutting. We're giving them a check for seventy five thousand dollars from the beautification committee to sponsor the stage.
Wow, thank you.
Awesome.
That, that's, that's, that's an amazing, that's, that's an amazing donation. And I just want to put it also in perspective. You mentioned when it start, when beautification started in the first chef's night out. And the, there, if you, you've been here in Ventnor long enough. The, the offerings of that chef's night out versus the offerings of this, these past year chef night out has grown. Like every year, there's more, there's not only more, more restaurants and more, 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 more participants. But the quality and the, and the, and then has grown and it, and I just remember it was kind of like a. A grassroots effort in the beginning and, and it was untried. It was really just a spark of your imagination that wasn't quite. Figured out how it was going to work out and it's grown into something that you, obviously you've given back to the community. So we thank you for that. Eight, eight locations. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's, so my point is that the, that your effort has grown with the city. It's grown with all the, the things that the city has to offer. So it's. So it's, it's, we, we're, 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 we're walking down this path together, appreciate it. Ribbon cutting.
Thank you so much, tremendous effort by you and your volunteers on, on everything you put together, not just the beautification stuff, but, uh, obviously our, our holiday parade. Um, but just thank you so much for this. That, that's, the money will be certainly put to good use.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's a, that's a, that's a huge deal for us and, and, and I, I hope, um, uh, I, I look forward to the ribbon cutting. Um, thank you and thank you for coming tonight. Um, so we'll be voting on that and getting out, out to bid to take the next step. Um, that is the last of the resolutions we're adding at the bench and then we will, um, we'll have, uh, bills and payroll. We have, uh, what's the, this, uh, discussion item, discussion items? Oh, okay. So, um, oh, that's right. Um, so there's one item, um, there's, uh, uh, the green team is present and Ventnor are presenting, uh, Doug Callamy, Ph. D., Stockton University, at Stockton University. Um, he is a New York Times bestselling author. Um, I believe it is about, uh, Tom, do you want to mention the?
Well, the, the event takes place in March.
In March.
At Stockton. Uh, it's being funded completely through donations by a variety of groups, but, uh, our local green team are the prime sponsors that put it together.
Right.
Uh, the city is providing a certificate of insurance for it to rent the space and there's a contract that needs to be executed. So I was just looking for a voice vote from you guys tonight that authorizes the mayor to sign that contract so we can just move ahead with it. There's, there's no, uh, expense to us involved.
Wait, it's pass-through money, no expense to us or the city and the topic is on, is, uh, um, is, it's, it's, it's green team related, but it's, isn't it the, uh, the, um, using, uh, plantings that are, um, uh,
I'm not indigenous. Everything that's going to be discussed.
Okay. Lance, did you have something?
I just said indigenous plantings, that's all.
That's the word I was looking for, yeah. So, um, uh, any, uh, any comments or discussion on that? I think it's been set up with, I think that, um, Margate is, uh, there's a lot of organizations, the A C U A that are part of this, um, effort that's going to.
No, I, I support it. You need a, you need a vote on that, Tom?
I, I think just to authorize this, uh, signing of the contract, I, I didn't want to sign a contract without you guys, uh, being aware of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I support it.
Yep, I do too, as long as it's vetted, right? Um, so any other discussion items?
Yeah, I, I have one, uh, Tim. Mark Greco, uh, reached out to me. He's got a, a company that does, uh, a project that is called Community Solar. Now, that's not their name, that is, that is actually a B P U, um, and, and state program that allows commercial properties, uh, sometimes occupied, sometimes not. But in this case, it would be on the roof of the plaza, the vendor plaza. Uh, they would put solar arrays up there, a lot of them. Um, Mark had wanted to do that for the plaza, but apparently the, the system there doesn't allow for it. So he's looking at other options to give back to the community and this community solar as part of its name. Uh, they provide, they collect that solar energy, they put it into the grid. And then what they allow is that to go to the residents of our community. Um, fifty percent of that has to be for low and moderate income households. So they would, if, if you want to do this, say if you're a household that is low moderate in your income, you would apply for that, show that you're low mod. And then you don't necessarily get that exact energy, but your, your bill, your electric bill would be reduced by the energy generated by that solar array. It's a really great program. It costs us nothing. Uh, there's some hurdles that they have to go through, uh, from the plaza standpoint and from the installer's standpoint. Um, they're going to need our support with Atlantic Electric to tie into their grid. There's, uh, there's two potential tie-in points and one of them would require some poles to be installed again at no cost to the city. Um, this would be a, a plus, plus to our residents. Um, the other fifty percent can go to anybody who wants to apply for it. Um, to get these, these basically credits to get your, your electric bills reduced. So I think it's a, it's a good program. Um, I met with, with Mark and Keith Pelzman from the, the contractor and I'm, I'm not remembering the name of the, the company he works for. But they just wanted, I wanted to vet it with you guys first before I said, look, we're on board. Um, so if there's any questions from me, I, I'll try and answer them. If not, um, Keith is available for you guys to reach out to. Um, I've already put him in touch with Atlantic City Electric and to work through them. Uh, they have to apply for the B P U to get the, the ability to do it. So it's a little bit of a process, but that, that application is due like next, next month. So I wanted to at least get a feel from both you guys, um, for Keith and his team to be able to make that application.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I mean, I'll say first, I think what you're, the public isn't seeing this, but it's basically covering almost every square inch of the roof line of the plaza from one to the other with solar panels that aren't really going to be seen by the public. And, um, but it's just another, uh, example of how this, uh, the ownership at the plaza is making, um, long-term improvements. So they're going to have to improve, they're going to, they can't put these on without new roofing, all the, all the things that, uh, that align with, um, a good neighbor, which, um, we know he's become out there at the plaza. The, so I, I have no objection to it at all.
Great.
Great as well.
All right, good. Thanks, I, I'll let him know that, that we're in support and, uh, if he needs a resolution, we can put it together for our next meeting.
Right, great.
Thanks, guys.
So the, that is the last discussion item we had. Um, we talked about the band shell, um, which again, I thank, um, everybody involved in that. Um, and I'll keep you all posted as the progress becomes clear to me. As soon as possible.
We finally, the trigger for the week, we finally got the CAFR permit, which was the, the huge thing.
Yeah, the CAFR permit is, is huge. Um, so then, um, the next item on the agenda here is for, is public portion. Um, so this is public portion for anything that's been discussed so far in the, um, workshop session. So, uh, I, I'll read this, um, briefly, but it can, uh, so anybody, um, uh, anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on anything that we've spoken about so far in the workshop session, um, now is the time you can do that. If you like, sir, you're going to come up? And, uh, just have to state your name and.
Thank you, Bill Sabanjan, three oh six North Lafayette Avenue, Ventnor Residence since, uh, seventy-eight. Um, on H, on the, uh, the grant for the recreational, has that been approved?
No, that's the, that is, um, we're voting on the ability to apply for the grant.
So we're applying for the grant.
Correct.
So anything that is deemed where we will use it for will be after we get the money for the grant.
Yeah.
So, so right now, uh, it just, we're in a, uh, application, uh, part of this now?
Yeah, so it's one of many applications for grants. We have a great grant writer, the Rotella Associates, and they are always looking for things that are a fit for the city of Ventnor. Some things are, some things aren't. This, we happen to have a lot of, uh, need for recreation improvements. We've got, we've got, uh, pickleball courts that need resurfacing. We've got, uh, we're, we, we try to do the worst first, but this is, um, uh, we're always looking to take the burden off the taxpayers and find, uh, uh, when it's the right fit, sometimes matching money doesn't make it the right fit, but, um, and, but this is just the first step. Uh, you, you don't, you don't get it if you don't ask, so.
Well, you, you, you opened it up. If, if it does go through, it could be a long process, correct?
Yeah, but we, or it could be something that we have in the works. It, it, this grant can be used for, uh, uh, repairs on existing, or it can be used for projects we have in the pipeline, like the Eco Park. Or it depends on when it hits in the cycle and whether we've already funded it or not, unless someone else, Tom.
So, but you do know, you brought it up, the pickleball courts are, I'm in VPAC, uh, there, uh, committee. And, um, the advisory committee, and we do have a problem there right now. So we're just wondering, uh, if there's anything that you need from us to help move that along so we can get our courts ready for use now.
Yeah, but our internal discussions have focused on resurfacing the pickleball courts. That, Commissioner Kribel brought that up.
That's right.
That is likely what we're going to apply for. And then depending on how much of a grant we are awarded, uh, would dictate how far that stretches.
Okay, we're just looking on a timeframe, that's our biggest, because now it's.
Know that yet.
And, you know, at some point they're going to have to close the courts down to resurface.
Yeah, well, we're lucky that this has come up when it has.
Exactly.
So we'll try to, um, I, I don't know if there's anything, you, we can take it off, offline, another conversation. If there's something you can do as a, uh, when we get to that point, there might be a place for your organization to put a letter.
Absolutely.
With a letter of support to the application and, um, and then, you know, we can always write a narrative about how it's grown. I think we're up to somewhere around seven hundred people.
Seven hundred paid.
Paid, yeah. And they use that facility for us. So there's a good story to be told there about use, that's what people, that's what these things, um, you said. Mayor, do you have any other, um, comment on that, that is?
No, uh, just one thing, we, we're aware of the issues on the courts. Um, I actually have Matt Doran looking at something in the interim. If, if we don't get the grant, um, or if it comes too late for this season, uh, we can do some temporary fixes, if you will, uh, to fix the most egregious issues that we're having, but, because we don't want to, you know, really delay, um, pickleball usage for the, for the spring and summer. So, you know, we can do some temporary stuff that, that Matt's been very successful in using in other communities. Um, so we're working through that process as well, kind of side by side with this grant application. The ideal, ideal situation is we get the money, we can repave them all.
We, we know what it really needs and at some point they're going to have to re-ground and completely the basketball, the tennis and the pickleball courts.
Yeah.
To bring them potentially.
Yeah.
Yep.
Ballers are a lot like rowers, we'll break the ice if it's a good flat day and there's no wind and I've seen pickleballers out there after snows.
Absolutely.
On the court.
We're out there.
So the, the polo pickleballers. We, we realize it's a force of nature, uh, the, 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 the association.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's, um, that concludes the public portion unless anyone else has something to add. Uh, anybody on the, on Zoom have, uh, any, uh, anything that they want to comment about things we've discussed so far? Jim?
If anybody on Zoom wishes to speak or comment, please raise your hand within Zoom and I will ask you to unmute your microphone. Nope.
No? Hearing none, uh, we will close the workshop portion of the meeting. Um, can I have a motion to close port, uh, those workshop portion of the meeting and open and call to order the regular portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second? Lisa, can I have roll call?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve minutes of December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three?
I make that motion.
Second.
I don't think Maria can, she wasn't here.
So I have to second, so I will second that motion for approval of minutes, roll call. Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Stain.
Mayor Langria?
Yes.
Right, uh, can I have a motion, uh, for ordinance introduction of zero, 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 three? Ordinance for amending and supplementing chapter two, one, four, vehicles and traffic, articles six, schedule chapter forty, schedule eleven, uh, that's twelve, loading zones. I'll have to get my daughter who's studying classics to brush me.
Your Roman numerals. I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty, twenty-four, dash, zero, zero, three.
Second.
Roll, roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes.
Uh, can I have a, uh, motion for public hearing on ordinance zero, zero, one? Uh, uh, this is the ordinance, uh, to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cap bank.
Make a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty, twenty-four, dash, zero, zero, one.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And, um, can I have an ordinance adoption for the?
We gotta, you gotta let.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public comment, gotta open it to the public.
Can I?
We made a motion to open it to the public, you gotta ask if there's any public comment.
Any, uh, can, a motion open to public comment on, um, ordinance zero, zero, one?
Motion to close?
Second.
Anyone in Zoom have any public comment on ordinance zero, zero, one?
Please raise your hand if you have any, any comment and I will, I ask you to unmute.
Nope. Now I'll make, now I'll make a motion to close, sorry, I was a little preemptive.
So seeing none in, uh, in chambers or on Zoom, motion to close public, uh, hearing on ordinance zero, zero, one?
Second.
You have to make the motion first.
Lance.
You made the motion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got it. All right, um, next nineteen is, um, ordinance adoption for, uh, ordinance zero, zero, one, as we previously described, kind of a motion for ordinance adoption.
So moved.
May I have second?
Second.
Lisa, I have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes.
All right, next, uh, we have a public hearing on ordinance zero, zero, two. This is, um, ordinance amending chapter two, one, four, vehicles and traffic, part two, article thirteen, meter schedule sched, section sixty-one, schedule twenty-two, parking meters and meter zones. May I have motion to open public hearing on ordinance zero, zero, two?
So moved.
Can I, can I have a second? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this, uh, ordinance is open for public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any comment on ordinance zero, zero, two? Anyone in Zoom?
Anybody in Zoom have any comment? No.
No, hearing none, motion to close public ordinance, uh, zero, zero, two on public hearing, excuse me.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is adoption of the same ordinance, so motion to adopt ordinance zero, zero, two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes.
All right. All right, as per the workshop, we have, uh, motion to adopt by consent, resolutions two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, four, three, through two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, five, five, by consent, adding ordinance zero, five, six, zero, five, seven, and zero, five, eight, as described in the workshop. Have a motion, uh, to adopt those resolutions.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolutions twenty, twenty-four, dash, zero, four, three, through zero, five, eight.
Second.
Lisa, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes.
All right. And, uh, next we have, um, Annie, will you, um, uh, describe the, uh, bills and payroll, please?
Payable supposed period is two million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and two cents. Payrolls for this period, one million, three hundred, eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seven cents.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve bills and payroll.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes, and we were so close to having a, the zero cent one. I've been waiting for eight years to have a zero cent bill and payroll. Two cents.
That's right.
Sorry, guys. Next one. A little punchy.
Do we need to chip in? Uh, thank you, uh, any announcements in safety report is, uh, written into the record. Lance, I think you mentioned you may have a, um, Commissioner Mayor report you'd like to.
Yes, I do, thank you, Commissioner Kribel, um, so a couple of things. So this is our first meeting since we had our, our first snow in two years. meeting since we had our, our first snow in two years, a significant snowstorm, you know, four, four inches or so. Prior to that, and may, many of you have seen the posts, as part of a leap grant with the county, we were able to get a brining machine and a dump truck to be able to pre-treat the, the county roads through not only Ventnor, but Margate and Longport. So we did that for this storm. We did it on Ventnor Avenue, Dorset, and Wellington. Ventnor Avenue was all the way through Margate and Longport, down to the bridge. In Ventnor, we also did Winchester and Monmouth avenues, the roads around City Hall, including Atlantic Avenue, and we also did it around Public Works, and I believe the library, the public buildings. From talking with, with Rick Santoro, he said it was, it helped quite a bit in removal of the snow. And I, I got to thank, these guys were out on Sunday morning before that. I guess it was, yeah, I guess it was early one morning. I, I know I surrendered to Gary Rothman, and he was driving the truck. Takes two guys to, to operate the, the brining machine, one to drive, one to operate the equipment. So those guys were out early in the morning getting all the streets done, and it seemed to really help. The snow removal went smoothly. The guys did, did a great job with that, so I want to give them kudos. Sticking with Public Works, the other night, Tuesday night, we had kind of everything thrown at us. We had our main sanitary pump, sanitary sewer pump at Public Works go down on us. So we had some issues there. We had installed a bypass. If you guys remember, about two, three months ago, we had the bypass piping installed for just this type of emergency. So we were able to bring in a, a pump, hook that pump up, and get that bypass working, and that worked very well. So that was a good kudos, and that was our guys, you know, doing that work. During that time, we also had a pump go down at the Fulton and Harvard sewer pump location, which is under the, under the roadway there, right by Commissioner Mento's house. The guys were out there that evening taking care of that aspect. The probes had, the rack holding the probes had collapsed into the pump, and they were damaged. We were able to get that fixed rather quickly. Third item, we had a water main break on New Haven Avenue on the beach block, with all of our other guys tied up with the other issues. Our, our supplementary crew came in and were able to fix that water main in-house and get that work done by ten-thirty that night. So kudos to these guys. They were out there in the cold, the wet, and fixing these things. I'm really proud of the work they've done over the last couple of months, and, and specifically Tuesday night, was just, everything went wrong. And they, they handled it well. Ernie and his team, and those guys did, and John Connor did a great job getting these three issues resolved as quickly as possible. So thanks to them.
Yeah, excellent. It, it does always seem to happen in waves or pile on, and that, it's similar to what happened, and they did a great job. It's similar to what happened. I just have one other. Do you have anything else, Mayor?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I, I, just to, just to sort of piggyback on that, we had another sort of pile-on evening when about, I guess on the nineteenth, there was a gas leak on a Friday night, and, which is normally, you know, a Friday nights, you see an uptick in, in just regular calls. But at this point, we had a gas leak on Ventnor Avenue, multiple, multiple, so we had to all at one time, not only handling the, the normal Friday traffic of calls, we had to shut down roughly four streets, an entire square block area, and under the, under the umbrella of the potential worst-case scenario in the gas leak, you've got, you've got to divert traffic, and then as it sort of escalated away from the street, the gas company asked us to, to evacuate houses nearby. So now you've got police, fire, setting up warming stations for people. They have to go door-to-door. Some of those people are not, are one of the, I know two at least were handicapped. They had to get them to safety, away from this situation. At the same time, you've got whole families, you've got to get headcounts, you've got to get headcounts of the people that were working that night, and you've got to divert, you, you've got to divert this traffic all, all along with the normal chaos that happens on a, on an, on a, on a normal evening. So he did a, I think, all of, all the police, fire, and, and the dispatch did an unbelievable job in that adverse situation. That's what they're trained for, but to, in my debriefing with the chief and hearing as things go on, it's just a, it's, it's, we're lucky to have such professional organizations doing that, doing their work.
Completely agree, Tim. They did a fantastic job.
Yeah. Just another day for them, but, but exceptional for, for folks that need it when they need it. So that is the, that is Mayor, Commissioner Mento, do you have any?
Promoted again. Well, you know, as Commissioner of Revenue and Finance, I never have anything fun to report. I can, I don't get to talk about these marvelous projects. I don't get to talk about special events and concerts and bandshells and, and the Hercule-like efforts of our police and fire departments and Public Works. I get to tell you that your taxes are due February one, and grace period this year, because the ten days falls on a Saturday. So the grace period takes you out to two-twelve. So that's the most exciting news I have to report, I'm sorry to say.
No, no, no. So, so, yeah, but your departments pay for all of these improvements that we're doing. So you got to take credit, credit there. You make sure we can pay for them.
We did put credit card machines in place, so that's working really well. Any game?
There we go.
So, you know, that's, that's a little bit of fun.
And we're poking fun at it, but we can't do these, we can't have these types of, we can't have nice things if we, if we don't have, if we don't have, if we haven't done the things in the background that we've done to get to this position. I mean, I look back at the bond rating and the work you did in and around that, that, that gives us cheaper money to borrow.
Exactly.
It, it's just good common sense budgeting that we are the beneficiaries of to do these things. These are thought, things that, that, you know, we're, we're in the, in the realm now of things that we want to do, not just the things we have to do. And we've been doing the things we have to do for, for the last eight years, and now we get to do some of the things we want to do.
Yep, well said, Tim. Well said, Tim.
Yeah. So, moving to public comment, and this is a open forum for, so, this is open forum for anybody in the chambers or on Zoom. If anybody wants to make a comment about anything, now is the time. We can open that. All in favor?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so open for public comment now. Anybody in, in the chambers, or I see none? We have some comments unattributed. Anybody in Zoom, Jim, that wants to make public comment?
Anybody in Zoom wish to make any comments? Nope.
Hearing none, we can close public comment. Motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next item is executive session if necessary. Do we have any, no, I'm seeing no reason for executive session. And last item is motion to adjourn.
Can I make one comment before you do?
Before we do that.
Because I want to tag team with what Maria was talking about with finance. As, as you'll recall, we engaged a contract with Jersey Cape Diagnostics to do our preseason sales. They're doing extremely well, but the sales for the month of January are going to far surpass what we did in-house historically. I want to remind everyone, anybody that is listening or picks up this news, that the online purchasing is a very smooth process for them. The tags are actually mailed to their home, so they don't need to wait to March or April or.
Beach tags.
Beach tags. I'm sorry if I failed to say that. But we, everybody knows, April and May, we get very busy selling beach tags. We sell probably twenty-five thousand tags in those two months. So people that are traditionally waiting that long, you don't have to wait. Get them now. They'll be mailed to you. You don't have to stand in line and fight the crowds to get your beach tags.
Yeah, so literally, there are lines that wrap around the corner when we sell. I didn't realize it was that many in, in that short period of time. So we'll have to do, and I'm sure we have, but we'll have to do a couple of blasts over time.
We'll keep doing that. There's going to be a reminder to go out with Maria's border bills. But I think it's a very convenient way for people to purchase their tags. It certainly helps us, it helps Lisa's office. They don't get swamped with having to deal with all that. So the more people buy them online, the better for everybody.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of that. There's less, less of that, because it is a, 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 a big influx of people coming in and taking care of us, so we can, so that's great.
Just on that, on that beach badge notice, I, I don't know, I guess we didn't do it tonight for resolution, but I, you know, Sue Simon is, is stepping away from the beach badge. I just want to thank her for the, the seven-plus years that she's helped us with that. You know, she's going to be very difficult to replace, but we, we really thank her for what she's done. And, and she really organized that, that, that department. So we appreciate that. So I want to thank Sue for that.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I agree. And hurting all those beach badge.
Yes.
There is, it was a big task, so she will be missed.
Yep.
All right, anything else?
And thank you guys for the accommodation this evening. I'm sorry I'm not there in person.
No, not at all. Glad you could make it.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
And you can adjourn. Congratulations on the liquor license.